I'm asking for your guidance, wisdom. Please help us direct us in ways that are in accordance with your will and your morals. In Jesus's name.
Amen. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Garrett.
Do you want me to do that right now while you're saying?
We'll call the meeting to order here a bit. We've got a couple more minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Borkin, give me this little pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good it's on Teams, Walter, not on Zoom.
It's on what?
Teams, it appears.
On Teams?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know what that is, but they're hearing it here now, those that want to be seen live.
Everyone has an agenda. If we need to make any corrections or changes to the agenda.
I would like to add a couple things if I can. Old business, HR update. And I guess, I'm not sure, I guess it's, would be new business, the Zoom meetings. And then, I guess, new business I'd like to talk about. Possibly have a meeting in Upton and changing the order of our meetings.
Explain that.
Do you want me to do, explain it now, or?
I guess just like change the order of the meeting.
When we do public comment.
Oh, okay.
What we got with the new business?
New business, okay.
Also, under the new business, right after the letter of resignation, we do have an application for a rendition too, so. Is there any better change in the rendition?
Let me make a motion through the agenda as amended.
Second? The motion, property seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all over the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all over the opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Of course.
Well, we will work on vouchers.
Okay. It's like you're rep now, Jim.
Yeah. I guess everybody's got my email. That's pretty much the line I'm on.
Cost to do business. We have no choice on that. Is that going to be enough? Will you raise that too?
I, corporate guys, if you can.
Oh, you did tell us. I would lean toward your recommendation, you know, more watch you're going to use than what we will.
Hundred fifty thousand begins, should be close.
Okay.
Seventy five thousand, maybe seventy five thousand. We put along with these nine blocks and a couple of bucks, so.
You want me to go seventy five or fifty?
No, seventy five, maybe safe, because we're averaging around fourteen, fifteen thousand on that.
What is the board think? You want to go up to a concealed line out to another seventy five thousand?
Well, I'd like to thank you too, Jim, on, I don't know if it was Quincy Daniel, but the decrease in diesel usage since 2020. I know the cost has gone up phenomenal, but just feeling that and rolling with the punches a little bit, I mean, that's what the report looks like, so.
Yeah, we feel so much of that. We can't control what we do. This way they're good.
Appreciate the usage decrease, because that, the increase that we're talking about is just strictly the price of fuel, right?
Yeah.
Ed, could I ask if you could repeat what this is about aloud enough so that they can hear it on the video?
Road and Bridge is short on funding for the fuel resources.
They're asking for seventy five thousand more?
Roughly.
Okay. Would you bring it up to what, a hundred fifty?
No.
No? What would it be?
You got thirty, isn't it? So you think that thirty would get you a couple months' growth to it, right? There's that. You need to go back, retroactive a month, is that retroactive?
No, that should be right around there.
Yeah, exactly, twenty eight. He has thirty left.
So if we increase it by forty. If we get it to forty, that's about seventy, right? Roughly.
Increase it to seventy five if we're getting it better.
You say you want to increase it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we increase it by seventy five, that puts you at two fifty for the whole year.
Right, and that's what we're going to use.
That's about where you've been. Up to seventy five, we give up to two fifty, or it should be. I don't know. We have to decide, take that out of. We just got to one forty six in financial admin. I think we can take it out of there, have a financial admin. That leaves at one forty six in the financial admin for either upcoming unforeseen projects. Okay. So we want to make that a motion?
I'll make a motion to take twenty five thousand from financial admin out of the road bridge.
What numbers are those?
She's got all the numbers, all the account numbers.
Financial admin, here it's under the miscellaneous.
Twenty's.
Twenty's account. And then Road and Bridge is even very last one on page four.
I'll say. We have a motion, property seconded to move seventy five thousand out of financial admin into the general road bridge oil and gas leave account. Is there any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all over the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all over the opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
We got a postback to fix the blade. Jay, can you repair that engine? But they recommend we don't. So if there's a warrant for the account holder, it's just barely in spec. So there's a chance we're running into the same problem. It's a little over twenty nine thousand, fix that motor. We can put a new management engine in for forty three thousand.
A new management?
Yes, that includes labor and everything.
Forty three?
Just a little bit.
It's only three. I thought that was pretty reasonable. Fourteen thousand more for them, and then there'll be a warranty on it.
A year, yeah.
Yeah, there wouldn't be.
One year warranty.
Parts and end. Ninety five hundred hours on that machine. I think it's about ninety seven percent, so it'll be good.
No, I wonder where you get that from?
I think it'll be some of the dollars that they're making. They're for sale, but they're dead in the future.
Okay, well, I'd say it's. I guess move forward.
Got to hold the biolog, engineering some deaths to serve the, both extension on Barton Road. Like five months out on that, so.
Anybody else think we ought to use maybe, or is?
I think maybe a little bit of production.
I don't think everybody's going to be out that far.
I guess I can, if you can, definitely.
Hey, no, I may do, yeah, I'll give you a couple more words.
Okay. No, I don't think we've committed anything. So we don't get a hold of this. I had a Zoom meeting with Whitehawk, and we're looking at being able to make coming road closures. And if they close, a highway, then we can jump in and be closed. So the coming road, so one of it, which basically is unenforceable, but just also we could set it to an elevation campus to start, quickly get them to quit reviving people. Some of these folks that are having problems have come over and filed with us. If the decision to close or prevent the traffic, or, you know, go through traffic, whatever.
Could you on that, I'm just like the old eighty-five out there, put when they do that closure, just notice local traffic only?
Yes, yes, they can.
That way, that way, when it pulls up their GPS, they won't route them that way.
Yeah, they can basically do it anywhere.
Very good to look forward to, look into.
Basically, just wants to contact information, you can contact the, you know, because it's, you know, cost free, so.
Okay.
Would that be on a temporary only, Jim?
You could do it your way.
Man, it would be nice if, I mean, we're putting some work and stuff into that, it wouldn't. If you were, if you were coming northbound on the loss, from the loss, coming on North eighty-five, and you had MapQuest it, like to Custer, it might route you up through there in Greenhouse Road, regardless of what you're driving.
Right.
That might be, that might save a road.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have, there's, that's all the time, we got campers going through there.
Right.
That's been a problem for several years. You know, if we could put on there, you know, close to local traffic only, and just always pull that up, then that should route them on the main highway.
Right, because they're going to follow the arrow.
Yep.
Guaranteed.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yesterday morning, I got stuck upon Skull Brick in the process of getting picked up out of, slid into a, our snowbank, a little bit of damage on the right hand side. I think I'm going to get it fixed, and I'll go for it myself, so. Garrett, get a little freedom to work on the point of this, you know?
Shouldn't come out of your pocket, that's.
It's not extensive, but.
That's a lot.
I think you should take that out there, but.
Fair. I'd have probably gave it out of your personal, you're doing a job for us, and that's part of us doing business.
Would you guys want to see the, just a suggestion?
I'd, John trusts your word on it. See the quotes on that, late preparing motor?
I can email it to you guys if you want, I can forward it to you. I just got it this week.
Just email it to me. Have money, you got it all those.
You got it. You got a lot of money in that prepared, so a whole sheet of paper. It's about that.
How's the rest of the blade's holding up?
We have a board, motor go out on one. Cat couldn't be a replacement until the end of this month, but we kind of an aftermarket one, at least gets stolen. We want to have a captain come in for the cat, and we'll take him to show. Other than that, no big problems. The loader's down at Mallow. Needs a new, right balancer, but Mallow Bar to bring it, go ahead and take it down, it's a thousand dollars. Can we have an order, I'm going to get there and take that over and do a fix.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that, I don't know who the gentleman was that played it up there on my road, but when I was pulling up to him, it's only, he did a great job, and I noticed he was putting his chains on. He was lying between the wheels, didn't have any kind of chalk or anything, I mean, if it were to roll, I don't want him to get hurt. I've noticed that, I don't know if it's not a big deal, but I, you know, I noticed it and I thought, you know, God, I hope that thing doesn't roll. And it was sitting on the hillside, so.
I guess things won't take their chances, I guess.
Well, I mean, just a thought.
They probably had to blade, set it pretty hard.
Yeah, oh, yeah. The blade is up, and.
Did fast that on to him?
Yeah, it's just I don't want to get him, see him get hurt.
Yeah, you know, usually the blade's grounded, you know, to get it off.
Yeah, he was awesome. He was putting on, he did a great job, I'm just, I was like, oh, I hope that thing doesn't roll.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah. Okay, next up is old business. Website update.
Okay. We met one day with a gentleman that I've used in the past for my business, and he was willing to come look at our Zoom TV and what we've got going on, and to do us a quote to fix some of the things that would make it work better. And I'll tell you a little about that, and then we had another part to it that Garrett took care of. So essentially, he said a few different things as far as moving the camera so we can see everybody and whatnot, that's an easy fix. He went through the computer on the TV, because the TV has a computer in it, he said it's a good, it's a good system, but the computer is bogged down, there's been so many, we've tried to fix it so many different ways that it's only running at about fifty percent, he said, so that needs to be cleaned up. He felt like it was a very easy fix. Microphones, these microphones are probably not working at all, and not necessarily what we need here to make it work the best and easiest way. One of his concerns was that none of us have an admin account for the computer. If we're going to be running the meetings, it'd be easier if one or two of us had an admin account, so we can run it. And he would do a little training with us to be able to get in there and get it going. He said all of it's very simple fixes. He did recommend that we look at how we're set up with our wireless, because it's a very weak signal into here, and he said that's probably part of the problem, it keeps dropping it. And you'll be able to get on, and then it drops. And part of that is just signal strength, so with that, I'll give you Garrett.
To go along with the microphones, these microphones are probably good microphones, but the way that the Zoom works, it was only pulling up, even though they're linked together, one microphone. We went down through and did a mic test, so as the default, we switched it to the webcam. It seemed to like, it seemed like it worked better. It pulled, it pulls in the whole room, and hopefully anyone that's joined us today on Zoom can hear us. But right now, it's currently pulling up the microphone through the webcam. Did meet with Range on, didn't want to step on anybody's toes, I don't know how, like I said, I'm new on a lot of this stuff, but just trying to figure out what our, what our main problem is with the Zoom connection. Zoom does have fiber in the building, that's where, that's where the source comes from, and then Golden West is the service provider through the rest of it. There is, on the switch box in there, there is an open port that we can directly tie the TV into, so we don't have to worry about Wi-Fi signal. That was something that could be considered on just trying to bulletproof the TV. I think this has been a discussion we've kind of kicked around a little bit, maybe we haven't dove down into it hard enough just to actually get it fixed, but they haven't yet put together any estimate or anything as far as what that would cost, but it looks to me like it's not going to be major monies to run a CAT five or whatever it is from that switch box into the room.
The meeting was one hour. What's he talking about? Is he wanting to pay you?
He said he would wait to see if we, if we used him to do all of this, he'd just add it together.
So the meeting that happened last week, is that what he's referring to?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
And so, the total for everything, for him to do what he, he needs to do to clean it up, help us set up an admin account, do a little training, three hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Show the record. I'm going to read some to everybody here. All meetings of the governing body of an ABC are public meetings, open to the public at all times, except as otherwise provided. Meetings may include not only formal meetings, but also informal conferences or sessions of members of the governing body for the discussion of public business, whether a decision is made or not, when a quorum of the governing body is present. So I just want to on the record that I was not informed of this meeting last week, and I did not attend. So, and now we're potentially being charged for something.
I am.
Just for future, we got to do it by, we got to set like a workshop or something, so that doesn't happen. I mean, it's violating open meeting law.
I also have concerns about that meeting last week. There was three commissioners in this room, my understanding was. I've got an email from one commissioner, basically give an update of what happened in that meeting. By reading that update, there was, various decisions were made to get bids from different people. We are currently in a lawsuit over open meeting law violation. My concerns now is, I guess, is the newsletter journal and their legal team going to file into the lawsuit on us against open meeting violation? Or they just going to let this one slide because certain commissioners, that they want to continue dragging their names, but weren't involved? That's where my concerns are. Don?
I think those are valid concerns that Nathan just brought up and you brought up. What I will say about the, my point of view of it is, is this TV and the Zoom meetings has been brought up for quite some time. We have asked for it to be looked at, we have been requested by the constituents for it to be looked at, and it has been continuously ignored with it's fixed. It is not fixed, that's clear. The open meeting law, also when we say the importance of it, is people who want to get on the Zoom meeting that cannot attend the meeting, a public meeting, so that they can have their input in what's going on in the community. So I think those concerns are valid, and they should be noted, and we need to abide by them, but I also think that we have drug our feet with this whole Zoom thing for way too long, and we keep saying we're going to get it fixed, and every week it is not fixed, so that's my point.
Well, that's my problem, Dom. If you got an idea on somebody you could contact, you contact the chair and say, hey, I'm going to meet with Mr. Mills, and there's no problem with that, because there's not a quorum.
Agreed.
Or you come in front of the board and say, we need to have a special meeting at X time. I'm just tired of being in lawsuits.
Understandable, but some of the lawsuits are our own fault, and some of them run out.
This is, this is a violation of open meeting law, Dom.
I'm not denying that, you're correct. It's on the record, and in the minutes that I have requested, time and time again, for this to be looked at, and every week we're told it's fixed, and it's fine, and every week it is not fine, and it has not been fixed. That's my point. You're correct about your point.
I'll go back to last Monday of last week. You contacted me via phone, it was going to be you and Commissioner Huber.
Yeah.
I had, so I told you I had no problem with two commissioners meeting what they've entered.
Correct.
Then it turned into a third commissioner, which I would assume became a open meeting law violation. Was unadvertised, so.
Yeah. It's wonderful, I want to get it done, I just think, for future reference, let's get it done with by doing a, a special meeting, and we vote on having a special meeting, and either we're all here, or a quorum can then be present, where, you know, this, it just leaves us out there. And there were multiple people that reached out to me, you know, why is there three people in the chamber? Why is there three people in the chamber?
It can be handled under a work session, but you still advertise it and you take minutes during that work session. So it's not like it can't be done. It's just how this meeting actually took place. So. Otherwise, we can move, I guess we'll move forward as soon. So getting it fixed, the Zoom meeting problem fixed. But that's, I got, I got confronted with those on the spot.
I also agree with, with the three. We should not have, we should not have had to have been discussing that. Also, and I apologize for that. What I am interested in is how are we going to follow through with the correction of the Zoom meeting from here?
That's, this is a good start. I'm okay with it. I, I just don't like the way it happened, I guess.
Right. I understand.
The, I mean, I'm literally in a lawsuit for virtually the same kind of stuff and it's just, my mind is about to explode over it. But I think that Garrett trying this other avenue, it appears to be working. I, I don't know. And maybe there is some problems. I'm sure there is some problems still. One thing I do know, we spent an awful lot of time talking about Zoomings and not a lot of time about some of the actual county issues, the repair issues that need to be, start to be addressed. We need to either get it done or get it in a little time to talk about it.
I agree.
Anything else on the website update? HR update in here.
I was able to meet with Jeannie last week. She, that started out one day and ended up coming in another day. I was able to meet with her regarding the handbook and she has asked me to meet with her again this week. The handbook is almost complete. There was just a few issues that we needed to really look at and go through and make sure everything was covered by law. It's looking good. Jeannie's also been in touch with LGLP regarding the handbook, talking to them, making sure everything's good. So we're hoping to get it completed and to the commission for approval, first part of April. Couple issues have come up. I tried to call the new HR consultants to see about what they have, I know Becky sent them the handbook and found out that the only people that are approved to speak to them are Michael and Becky. And I think as commissioners, we need to be able to call them. I think we should all be on the approved list to talk to the HR consultants. And ultimately, it's our decision and we're the ultimate people who are the ultimate employer. So I think if it's, I'd like to take a vote on that and make sure that we all get approved to be able to talk to them. And after that, I think it would be good for them to come, either come here or do a Zoom meeting with the commissioners, talking about what they can offer as far as for our employees and for us as employer. So we have a really good understanding of that. To clarify other things, we talked and we thought it might be very helpful if the commissioners and the clerk's office both make a list of their roles and responsibilities while working together. There's certain things or statutes that Becky is, needs to do for us by law. But it seems over the years, the commissioners have asked Becky to do a lot of things that aren't necessarily her job. And so to help with misunderstandings and possibly things falling through the cracks as we're working with employees of the county, if she would make a list of her statute duties and then things that she's been just asked to do by commissioners over the years, her office, and then we make a list of things that we would like her to do still. And then maybe we can discuss it. I, I think it would help everybody with misunderstandings. Like I said, make sure things don't fall through the cracks with our responsibilities as commissioners. We're probably gonna also be, just to let you know, we may call other elected officials during this, finishing up the handbook in case we have any questions, like just about their special policies, et cetera. So anyway, it's, it's looking good.
You know, I guess I'd want to be, how we present this to the elected officials, you know? It's not something that we actually just throw at them, demand them. I mean, we need to ask them for their input politely. So I mean, things, so we can continue to afford our, our positive note with that.
Correct.
On the contact list that I have no problem with commissioners being on that list. My concerns are things get blown out of proportion right away, going to them instead of the employer and the elected official. You know, we're trying to work some of this stuff out on a local level. The communication on a local level is important. I think before we jump back to the HR people.
It is. That's fair. It's important, but if you're an employee, if you're an employee who has a problem with their supervisor, we need to make sure that the employees know that there's somewhere to go.
I mean, there's some situations, I mean, it's not acceptable, but.
I'd be curious if there's a chain of command to follow there somehow that they, I mean, if they directly follow, involve your supervisor, then you need to go to this level. And that probably needs to convey to the employees that they know then that potentially they have to then maybe come from.
That's essentially the handbook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're getting there.
Anything else on the HR update?
She reached out to me that, did you get the email from meetings this week?
Yes.
I'm in the middle of a cabin and all I would make is by phone. And if any other commissioner in here would like to attend, I would encourage it because as long as we're going to two, of course. But I don't know that I can make them this week. This is a terrible week for me.
Well, someone wants to let me know, we'll call. Let me know when she can.
Always do. Thank you for your input on this.
Next, we have maintenance position.
We'll pass it down. We can talk about this later on in the meeting. We'll get turned up behind, but we'll come back and revisit that at the end of the meeting.
On that. Okay, next up then is new business. We do have a letter of resignation. Followed by an application.
You want me to, you guys want me to read it or you want me to just pass it down?
You can read it.
Okay. Letter of resignation, Jessica Graham. Says, please accept my resignation from the Weston County Fair Board effective immediately. I am currently serving my 70 year on the Weston County Fair Board. My appointed term is up at the end of 2023. While I'd always been a thankless position in the situation we currently find ourselves in, has led me to be unwilling to complete the remainder of my term. Your board appoints our board, yet continually fights us in trying to accomplish the very things we have been trying to do. The complete lack of support and training has caused us to be liable for things we have no knowledge of or training in how to deal with. I'd like to remind you that we are the board of volunteers. Most of the whole full-time jobs, the last three months have caused considerable upset in my workplace. I see a minimum of one person per day coming into my workplace upset with valid concerns regarding the fairgrounds. Unfortunately, we can't seem to get any direction on how to handle the current situation or even a return call. I find myself trying to perform my appointed fairground duties blind. I've had as many as three people from the community standing in my workplace waiting room while I did also pull a six patients while waiting for their appointments with the doctor. Demanding answers and screaming old things I have no control over and have no way of resolving. I volunteered for this position because I love the county fair and that facility. However, I spend less than 10% of my time focusing on those things. Constant frustration dealing with the courthouse alone has nearly prompted my resignation repeatedly. As this is my final year, I have clearly decided to complete my term. The current situation, however, has made me refuse to part with something I can't be personally held liable for. Ministry of Communication, we received from your office provides your board is unwilling to support or protect us. Thank you for the opportunities through Weston County's last seven years and I hope this situation improves for all those involved moving forward. Jessica Graham.
Need to accept her resignation.
No, no commotion. Except Jessica Graham's resignation from the Weston County Fair Board.
How second? Are we gonna have a discussion of that again?
We have a motion promptly second to accept Jessica Graham's resignation during discussion.
Yes.
We, this is not the first time we've heard these similar complaints. Yes, we talked about before that we cannot micromanage, but we are responsible for the boards, the people that go on the boards and we're responsible for, in the training of those people. So I guess my question is, is by hearing this again, it's obviously not the first time. What are we gonna do? We can appoint somebody, but how are we gonna fix it to make sure that problem doesn't happen again?
You know, on the training into that, I, I don't think we've ever denied fair board training when they've wanted to go to training. If we start telling them exactly what training they'd go to, taking away from their time, then we will probably become micromanagers and then, I mean, if you gotta weigh the balance there. Do they come forward with training they request? You know, what do we do there? I'm open for suggestions.
Well, I mean, if they don't suggest any training and we put them on the board, then how do we know that they understand what their job is? I mean, there should be some type of a vetting system to, to see what they're getting themselves into. And I'm, I'm not implying I have the answer either, but this isn't the first time we've heard this from most people.
I'm an objective to say this involves something that probably doesn't have anything to do with training. And it's revolved around something else. So.
What?
I want to be careful about what I say, but I think the last sentence is safe.
Well, along with some of this HR stuff that we've been going through, it's, it's come to my mind that we should be more responsible with, with our boards and encourage them to have a job description for people who are coming into the board, that they can clearly see what their responsibilities are, are going to be. And encourage those boards to, to, to have some training for their, for their new people. If, if, that should be their responsibility, but we should also encourage it and do what we can to help them in, you know, find a training that they can do and help them with their job descriptions. Sometimes I think people go on boards and don't understand everything that's involved and unfortunately, it's not all fun. But it's something that we need to look at. I don't think that's micromanaging. Ultimately, the boards are people that we put in there. We're the ones that put them on the boards. So ultimately, it's, it is our responsibility to make sure that their boards are running smoothly. I don't think that's micromanaging, but if we encourage them to do things properly, I, I think that's what we need to do.
Ultimately, we as a county are responsible for the fair board and those grounds that they look over. Hence the reason for the letter coming to us. She did mention that training was a main part in the reason why she was resigning. Have we offered any, have we offered any training options or does the fair board have any training options?
I, I guess I don't know where to go with this. In my opinion, the training is only as far as you want to take it yourself. I mean, there's, there's avenues at the state level that it's free and it's, there's, there's all sorts of offered opportunities out there. And I mean, we could mandate something that, okay, this is what you have to have, but our board members really have. It's up to the individual board member a long time. I think clearly not that we get involved at that level or whatever, but.
Look, the language of the letter sounds like, like they didn't have that opportunity though. I mean, if there are, if there are state free training sessions, is it too much of us just to provide those options to them?
I wouldn't think so.
Not necessarily a mandate, but.
Yeah. Give them a direction. Like if you would like training, you could look.
Right. I think that's something that the board themselves should pursue, you know? It's not that we actually throw it out there for them. I mean, it's something they as a board should pursue. And I'm concerned, you know, do, do they have a handbook even for, to even give a new board member? You know, that might be something that would be helpful for them to do is prepare for a board member is, here's a handbook. Here's kind of what it's expected of some where we go. You know, I mean, there's, we're just tickled to get people on a board to fill the board. I mean, that's the big thing nowadays is just getting a full board.
That's probably a good point. Maybe that's something we could generate is that handbook and just say, this is what it means to be on a board and these are, I mean, that's, might give them some direction. I think it's hard, hard to deal with a lot of cases because here's your idea, people sign up and then they realize this isn't much fun.
Michael, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I, I heard last night there was legislation, proposed legislation about mandating training for all boards. I don't know what's happened with that yet. But I think if I'm not mistaken, even, wasn't Mr. Reiman?
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah. He probably has even a packet that we can use from him just to sort of give new board members, say, hey, take a look at this. And at least that's a start. And if that legislation passes, I guess it would be mandated. But I think it's. It did it?
It's law.
Is it? Okay. Passed last week. I think that's your answer.
A lot of the concerns about that on the opposition was, we'll see if they start killing boards.
Right.
But it may have the potential of starting killing boards.
It's extremely hard to get volunteers, that's for sure. But I think that the presumption is because you're a volunteer, that means you don't have to do anything. If that's what you're getting and the boards are, and they refuse not to do it or they don't get board members, then my guess is that board member probably wasn't worth being on the board in the first place. If you're not willing to go the extra mile to do what you volunteered to do. So.
Well, we do have a motion.
But there's catch 22 there. There's, there's board members that are interested in certain different avenues than other board members. And I think that's probably healthy. I mean, there's some board members that are going to be good with finances and some that all they want to do is make sure that everything's spick and span out there at the fairgrounds. And I think it's a, I don't want to shun anybody for their level of.
We have a lot of great volunteers.
I think.
Well, you look at the boards in this county, all the members from the vast work experiences. I mean, the wealth of knowledge that all these volunteers can bring together, it's amazing. You know, it's something we, we want to promote.
And if we organize them in the right way, all of us, then we can get them pointed in the right direction, I think.
And I think the fair board is a little different because it's set up a little different from the rest of the boards because it's right under the direct control of you guys. So I think with that direct control, probably. So I think with that direct control, probably want to be a little more, forceful is the word, but.
Hands-on.
Hands-on with that, making sure that training, because it comes ultimately to you guys to, like, understand you.
Giving more discussion? In favor of accepting resignation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, poll is opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Next, very seldom we have an application that will follow resignation. From Billy Jackson. Dear county commissioners, I am writing today to express my interest and apply for the open petition at the fair board. Seeing how the fair ground really carries a lot in the task of growing our youth in this area, be it through 4H, FFA, rodeo, receptions at the event center, racing, and other funding activities, I see myself as a good applicant. I'm active in putting Jukonas on, youth wrestling, the ice rink, and producing a youth rodeo coming in April. I have experience in operating kids' tractors, ski steers, and water trucks, which in the current situation is a plus for the board members as board members are doing the work hands-on. My skills continue onto welding and running a business, planning business schedules, problem-solving, hearing some future plans and talk of events I wanted to come to the Weston County Fairgrounds. I would be excited and thrilled to be a working part in all. Rolling up my sleeves and proving the present state in which the fairgrounds find themselves in, and once approved to maintain them, it is my hope to take the Weston County Fairground and turn it into a facility that those of people come to attend, many races, rodeos, roping, and shows looking to do. Sincerely, Paul Jackson. So we have two?
This was for the maintenance.
Oh, okay. For the courthouse maintenance. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to accept Billy Jackson's application for Weston County Fair Board member.
A second.
Our motion promptly second to accept Billy Jackson's application to the fair board. Open petition, ready discussion.
Is it possible to have them come in and sit down and give them the options that are available to them to help them, you know, get his, you know, feet on the ground with this? Or is that something afterwards or?
I'd like to accept it, have them invite the fair board in here to have a discussion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting Billy Jackson's application to the fair board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, poll is opposed, say nay. I think somebody will get him, but he will tell.
I don't know who that is.
Did you put an invitation out to? Please.
Okay, next, the board of equalization update.
Well, I was talking to Kara one day, and she said that before Tina Conlon left, she reminded her to ask us to update our rules for our board of equalization because they were outdated. And so I haven't, I was going to ask, but we had that and Kara had a copy that she sent everyone. Everybody got that? In my understanding, Kara, if you want to jump in, go ahead, that we could use the state board of equalization's rules. We can use those for our update. But I haven't looked into it or anything like that, so.
Get some, delve into it and kind of interesting, I mean, four years I haven't done one. I mean, nothing's come down the pike, but I discussed a little bit with my father, who's been here for 12 years, and he'd done a couple of them. What they would do is go get their judge and point him as their mediator. And then basically, the commissioners would act as a jury in that situation. And inevitably, what they would always do is direct it to the state at the end of, you know, we accept it, now we push it on to the state, or we deny it, and push it on to the state to let them have their say. And there's quite a little bit online on their website, too, for information. I think on moving forward, we have to actually hold on. It was pretty easy to go through. I think if something comes down the pike, I think we can probably handle it. I don't know if we need training, if you think we do.
Well, in my opinion, I guess I've obviously never gone through one either.
Yeah.
Starting in my second year here, and we didn't have one last year, but it's probably inevitable that we're going to have one at some point. I just wanted the board to be aware that those rules were outdated. I think the last time they were approved was in 2013. And I just wanted everybody to kind of start thinking about it in case we found ourselves in that position where you would have to act as the county board of equalization. And I just want everybody to start thinking about it so we aren't going into a kind of hole. I'm sure there's training, probably through Wyoming County Commissioners Association, I would assume, or you require reach out to the state board of equalization. Anymore, I think, how it has been going recently, from talking to other assessors, is the county board is represented by typically the county attorney. The assessor is typically also represented by a separate attorney. And then there's also a hearing officer to conduct the hearing. And then whoever applied to appeal is also welcome to bring their own attorney. You hear the evidence from both sides, you make a decision on whether or not the assessor's office had properly valued the property. You either hear in favor of the assessor's office or the taxpayer. And then whatever decision you make can be appealed by your side to the state board of equalization, where they're basically judging whether or not your decision was correct or not. So.
I did send an email to you, Jeremiah, and they are, they are working on a program. He said he didn't have a lot of knowledge about this, but they are working on a program, but it won't be done until probably the end of the year. So my suggestion would be for us to call the state board of equalization and talk to them about updating our rules using their rules, as Kara suggested.
Okay, I think that's really a common practice. I think several of the assessors I've spoken to have just updated their rules to adopt the state's rules. And in my email, I sent the most current version of the state's rules as well as the old ones, if you wanted to compare them. I guess we don't have a problem with the old ones, I guess you would have to update them, but I think it's probably recommended. And I do have a booklet that the assessor's office had put together in 2013 and given to all the commissioners. I don't know where those have all gone, spread their wings and threw away. I have a copy in my office with a lot of resources, but it might be a bit dated. But I think the timeline and the procedures and some of the things that happened in the meeting and before the meeting is in there, and I'm willing to make copies of all of that and give it to you guys so you can look through it and kind of get an idea of what the timeline is and the resources that you use to move forward with the appeal.
If you could forward that to all of us, and then we, in the meantime, look at the old rules and the newest version of rules and see if we want to update our rules to that current one.
I encourage you to get on the board of equalization website, too, because there's a lot of info on there while I'm on about the process.
I just had a question for Kara. We talked about this a little bit the other day. It probably would be good to have these rules, if updated, done like now, right?
I would like she made a motion.
Yeah, because we can do them as emergency rules for this tax period and then adopt them permanently later, so.
Correct, yeah. We can adopt them as emergency rules. I believe there's a timeline on adopting them permanently that we're probably not going to get it done before appeal period begins. Those evaluations are going to go out the first part of April, and from that time, taxpayers have 30 days to formally appeal. And I believe we aren't going to have enough time to advertise, the board won't have enough time to advertise to make those changes permanent. But you can adopt them in an emergency fashion, to use for this year.
I would maybe suggest we do homework in the next two weeks and go over them to see if we want to adopt the current version on an emergency basis until we can get it all advertised and done formally legally. Sound like a good idea? Start the book before next week. Okay. Anything else on the board of equalization? Thank you, Vera. Now we have a meeting location.
I know at the, at the beginning of the year, we talked about possibly having a meeting after once a quarter and a quarter's almost up. So I don't know if we can get it done our next meeting, but perhaps our second meeting in April, we can have it in October.
We need to do that by resolution, stating where we're going to have the meeting and when. We can do that by resolution.
Okay.
So I mean, that's something we can do.
The second meeting.
Sorry, we missed.
Yeah, the second week. So do we, well, let's just decide right now, do you want to do the second meeting in April? In October?
April 18.
April 18.
You're going to do a couple things out.
They have to do the next meeting, we have to have a special meeting, do a resolution during March already. We can do the second meeting in April. Is that scheduled, a special meeting, just the formal resolution, are you done? Okay. What time?
I guess we'll have to check and see if we can use the city.
We might ask the mayor. He let us know already.
I would think in the daytime, I don't know where everybody thinks.
Do you have anything going on?
On the 8th?
Yeah.
18th?
18th. April 18th. At 9:00 in the morning?
No, no. You're good.
Tell you the rights to.
All right. Well, we will get that ready for the next meeting, schedule, second meeting in April over there. The road is behind, Will.
That's all right.
You're up next.
Take your time.
We're hurrying.
You're up next.
I got more time than I got money, so.
Well, you're up next, that's the one up.
Up here?
Yep, that up on the front chair.
Do I have to have a long stick?
That way we can reach you.
There you go. I'm not very smart, so I ain't got an education, you guys. I'm just wondering a few things, is all, and I hope we can come up to some agreement. I live out by the state line, and I was in meetings a lot of years ago. You guys weren't here. But they told me in a meeting that if your road don't go out, I mean, if a road goes in and out, we don't take care of that. But if a road goes in and goes out another way, we take care of them. But I've been here and there's some roads that have been going in and coming out and then taking care of them, and we get nothing out there to stay. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you guys, I know I'm nervous and stuff like that. And I don't like to cause any trouble or anything, but Vera and them guys know me and stuff. I worked hard, I worked 40 years on that road. And I'm going to be honest with you guys, that I've gravelled that road and I've worked hard on that road. And I got the cops coming out there just tearing through that road and the fire trucks and stuff, which I understand. And they told me that, you know, we should be doing some gravel out to you guys for doing all that tearing around. And we don't get a damn thing. I think we should be able to take a little of our money each year and put a little bit of gravel on our road. And I'm not asking for a lot. I mow the weeds, I gravel the road, I take care of the snow, I do every damn thing there is, and I get a zero for it. And I'm tired of it. And I'm going to, I told them, I'm going to change things. I'm going to take my damn tractor out in the road. If there's an emergency, I'm going to park that sucker right across the road and I'm going to take a nap. And some of them people can just wait. I'm tired of it. I mean, I think the county should do a little something for us. Because you guys take care of roads. Sure, I'd love to pay taxes if you guys took care of my road. Yeah, I'm glad to do it, but I don't get a damn thing. Our old signs are out there, wood signs, and people come to me. I tell people, I'm the mayor out there, and I get damn nothing. People come to me all the time, and they say, what's this road? What's that road? And I said, you know, I said, the old wooden sign, they said, well, we can't read them. I said, the county don't do nothing for us, not a damn thing. And I think it's kind of tiresome. I mean, I'm just that way.
Peter Billy, I ask you a question.
Sure.
Can you tell me which road we're talking about?
Well, it's Ferguson Canyon Road out there by the state line. Ferguson Canyon Road, I don't know. Does that tell you anything?
Can you show me on there?
I'm very good at it. I'll see, but, no, I, it's just across the state line. Gene Mahoney, did you know him?
Yeah.
Gets off that one.
His ranch is off of Wolfup Canyon.
Wolfup Canyon, there you go. Wolfup Canyon. But no, I just thought I could ask. And I want to be fair with people like I've been fair with people. And I pay my taxes. And then another thing come, in the courthouse here, they said that they're changing my address. And I said, no, you're not. Because I said, that ain't a county road. I said, I'm staying in mine and Pfeifer's and Canyon Road. So I don't know if I call an ambulance, if anybody can even find Pfeifer's. Because I'm still, and I stood there and I told them, now, if I get bad bills and behind and stuff, are you going to take care of that? Because I know how mail mixes up. And I said, they said, no, we're not doing that. And I said, it's staying right where it's at. So I'm Pfeifer's and Canyon Road. I don't think they had any rights to change that. Because if they needed county road or nothing, you guys don't want to do nothing out there. I don't think, I'm trying to, I'll tell you what, I'm going to be honest with you guys, and I'm going to do it. I got a sign that says Mayor Ferguson Canyon Road. I do got it, and I put it out there. And I'll tell you what, I'm going to say, and I'm looking for signs, I got some guys looking, I'm going to put out there, it ain't going to matter to you guys and it ain't going to change, but I'm putting Crook County out there. And if you guys want to do it, I can put it in the paper and stuff, say Weston County can't make it without Crook County. And I think I got that right. Because you guys should help us.
I'm confused, Will, is this a county road or is it?
No.
Is it, was it ever a county road?
No, it ever was. They wouldn't accept it because it goes in and comes out the same way. But they say, what's his name, up north there and stuff, he's a big wheel. I can't think of his name offhand, but they say his road goes in, out, and the county takes care of that pretty good. Because he's a big wheel, he's a big millionaire and a big wheel. He died here a while back up north there, but I can't think of the name offhand.
Is it county road on the other side of the state line?
He goes in his yard and out.
No, I mean, on your road, is it county?
No.
Is it South Dakota county road?
No, it's, I'm in Wyoming.
No, I mean, when it hits the state line, does it turn into county road in South Dakota? Do they maintain it on the South Dakota side?
Well, I don't know about that, but yeah, they do, they take care of like the Dewey Road there and stuff. The county takes care of that one in South Dakota and stuff, but I just wanted to. The county takes care of that one in South Dakota and stuff, but I, I, I just wanted to find out if, if they're lying to me or telling me the truth. If there's Bozinski up there, and, uh, they said his road goes in out, and the other ones, they said they could show me, but I didn't go check, but I'm going to check it out this summer. But, uh, I'm just asking if I could take, let's say, a hundred or two hundred off each person out there. I count the mailbox, there's thirty-some people out there, and there's a couple people get their mail in town, so there's over thirty people out there living. There's a lot of traffic up and down that road. I'll tell you, two years ago, this is no lie, I got a two-ton truck, single axle. I hauled in thirty-two loads of gravel on that road, and you can't tell it. Everybody just drives a hundred miles an hour, and nobody will help you. I do everything free, you know? I don't want to cause trouble, but.
I got one more question, Willard. Uh, I guess, to me, what it sounds like is, is, it sounds, in some instances, similar like the Barton Road that we're dealing with right now. And what's happened is, there's, there's individuals that live out there that they've, they've caused their own problem by moving out there, and there's, there's a lot of people on the, on the extra road. Nobody's responsible for maintaining the road, but you get some guy that has a heart-sized uterus and you go out there and you maintain it for everybody else. So, there's an avenue around that, and, and it's, and who's the people that live on that road, I think? To look at potentially creating that as county road, and it would, it would be something that we should, I don't know who to tell you to. If you got somebody else that you'd like to work with out there that, to help get signatures and, and start a petition, that then it could come in front of the board. Because as of right now, there's absolutely nothing we can do.
Yeah.
But if you were to start that petition process, and, and the board saw that there was a need for, if there's thirty families living out there, and it's a benefit to the county to, to keep these families happy and safe and everything else.
Well, I just think they come out there all the time, and they're running, I mean, it's an emergency, and I understand it, they're running pretty damn good out that road. And, uh, and they think they can just do whatever they want, and I think, hey, that's our road, dude, I mean, I kept up for forty years already. And I'm just different, I'm, I'm a guy, I like to be fair with people, and I always have been. You know, but, uh, I, I'm just that guy. I run my tractors and all that work, and I buy everything, and I just think, and they even called me and want me to come up and do their road for nothing. And this is no lamb lie, you can ask my wife.
Hey, Willard.
Yeah.
How many years have you lived there?
Forty years.
Forty years. How many people lived past you on Ferguson when you moved there?
Well, just a few.
Just a few.
Probably five or six.
Ferguson Canyon, it branches off of Whoop Up.
Yeah, Whoop Up Canyon, yeah.
Off of sixteen, Whoop Up, and then Ferguson.
Yeah.
And since they've developed that upper portion, because there's a road now that goes up, um, up that district, there's, there's quite a few that have developed up there.
There's two other roads out there.
Yeah.
Also continuing on down Ferguson, so there was only a couple forty years ago, and, and we've got quite a few now.
Now we got lots.
As time has gone on.
There's over thirty people there, and then there's some land yet for sale, now somebody said they sold a couple more, so there'll be more out there.
And on top of that, you're one of the first ones coming off of Ferguson, or onto Ferguson, from Whoop Up, so any traffic that's up there, you see all of it.
I see all the traffic, both ways, in the, but I'm not, I'm trying to just be honest with people, that's all I'm asking. I think, and them guys at Wellings, they'll pay county taxes and everything, heck, they're glad to pay it, because they're getting benefits out of it. I'll say, I think we should be able to take a little bother. Mine went up a hundred and fifty dollars, I think, last year, and I figured, what the heck is it going up for? And I'll tell Vera knows, I live in an old eighty-three trailer house with lane twos on it, and everybody around me builds big fancy houses and basements and everything. And my taxes go up according, according to their living. My, I can't sell my place without cash buyers, right? I live in a trailer house on blocks in a lane two. Now, you're going to tell me that somebody builds a fancy house out there, it's going to, I can sell mine as a house. I sacrificed it as a house for insurance, because I put it all together, and they said, if you count it as a house and center your title, we'll, we'll insure it cheaper. So, that's why I did it, but it's still a trailer house with lane twos, and I, I gotta have cash buyers. Then I can't get a loan on it, and you knew that as well as I do. I can't get, and I'm getting taxed really good, they raised a hundred and fifty dollars last year. And I think that's stupid, I mean, we ain't getting nothing out of it, and I, and I can't sell it unless I get cash buyers, and that's the way it is. But I'm just trying to be decent.
You know, if you'd be interested in maybe pursuing that, to get, you know, petition, get that to a county road, I think, Michael, do you have the, the form, the, like, the, the form, how you go about what we need to do?
Well, I'm going to just ask you, I got people out there, I mean, I, I, I went around and asked them for a hundred or two hundred, everybody to chip in. Well, they thought that, they went up and complained that I was out there getting money. I was going to, I was going to take over for the county, I was going to county all your guys, I could gravel all the Wyoming, that's what they act like. They don't, they, they're stiff types, I mean, they don't give you a dime. I'm not lying to you guys. I haul all the, I haul all them thirty-some loads in there, you know what I got out of the whole thing? One hundred dollars. And I thought, you know, and I think, boy, that's pretty sad.
I'd get that information from Mr. Stolkin, Willard.
What I'm trying to say is, most of them don't probably want a county road, because we'd like, it's, it's a private road with public access, if I'm right. But a lot of them don't want to probably give up the road to say, hey, why would we give it to a county road? We want to kind of keep it, like, we got it, let's say, at that one. How could I do that? Would you have any suggestions?
Maybe just do a portion of the road.
I would, I would reach out to the fellow people that are out there and try to get a process started, Willard, and, and what you do is, his, his paperwork will have a signature page, and it, it all it takes, I think, four or five to, to start the process. And then, then you have discussions in here of, do we want to proceed or do we not want to proceed, and, and if there's an overwhelming majority of people that say absolutely not, then.
Yeah.
You know, but at least it gets the process started, and unfortunately, that's probably the only thing that I can.
Well, some suggestions is a suggestion.
I would start that.
That's the way I feel.
I would get the paperwork from Mr. Stolkin, and I would start that process.
Right, because gravel.
When he has a chance.
Yeah, no, I'm, but, no, I'm, I'm just trying to be fair, and I'm getting old and I'm crippled up a little bit and everything, and I'm getting to where it's hard to grow. People tell me all the time, you know what you need to do, and I said, well, I probably do, is get on the county and be a county commissioner. And I know a bunch of people said, hell, I'd vote for you, and they said, I'm well-known around, I'm not perfect, but I'll tell you what, they say, they'll gravel your road, because you gotta get it out.
It don't work. I live, I maintain a mile of road up to my place.
Really?
It's a privately maintained, public road.
Yeah.
And it goes all the way to State Pond, so we get.
Yeah. You got anybody that'll help you?
Nope.
That's, that's normal around here. I'm, I'm born and raised in South Dakota, we all went together and did things. I'm so used to that, but I don't want to take up all your day either.
Thanks, Willard.
You know, thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Willard. Appreciate your.
I'm goofy. Oh, yeah, I guess I gotta grab you out of the chair if you don't hear me.
That's true.
Yeah, I would thank you guys here. Oh.
We're a little behind, Henry, but you're up next.
Look, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm sitting in one position too long. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, members of the board, thank you for a little bit of your time this morning. I just wanted to kind of update John, because my goal is transparency. I did a presentation last night to the city at their meeting, and I want to make sure that the same information that was given to both governments, the city and the county, also goes out to the members of the chamber and to the community, because we're really all one. And I'm going to call it an adventure at this point, because many, so many things have been happening with the chamber. Um, the very first thing is membership. We're currently on our renewal drive, and we've only had about half of the members that we had last year renew their membership. I'm hearing from both members and non-members why, and the stories vary, everything from the chamber is not active enough in the community to, no, the chamber needs to dissolve, it's not needed anymore. It's such a wide array of what's going on. So, I'm trying to maintain a balance and compromise, and one of our members that has absolutely, is only that right now they will not renew, said that when he first talked to me, based upon things that happened, he was an enemy of the chamber. But after about an hour in the fun, well, then he said, okay, you brought me to neutral, let me see what you did. So, I'm, I'm working on it, I'm giving it a try. Remember, though, our board director still is volunteers, and we are working on the businesses in the community. I produced a development plan for the chamber to look forward, a one-year plan, I have given that now to the board, I'm asking for their input. Once I have that back, I'll produce the plan and publish it, and again, you all in the city will be first on the list to get copies along with the board and the chamber members. And I'm working on starting to get everything posted on our webpage. Our webpage is going to be suspended for two months while it goes into development, and by April, we'll have an entirely new webpage, where you'll be able to access a lot more information, including minutes, agendas, uh, rules, regulations, et cetera. Just, we're going to make the website as open as possible. Currently on activities and events, we've started to move our meetings to lunch meetings during the business day. Our last one was held at Grazer's. Uh, our next meeting is tomorrow at twelve-thirty, all welcome at, uh, early queues, anything off the menu is twenty percent off, they told me. So, I can, I enable that, except alcohol, they will not do alcohol on that discount. Uh, the March seventeenth Friday, there's a mixer, I'm inviting the community, no charge to walk in the door, the only charge will be a cash bar. There will be hot hors d'oeuvres, and I just, I'm there for a conversation. I don't want to bog it down as a fundraiser, as all the rest of the things that had gone on in chamber, uh, mixers and open sessions before. I want to meet the public, I want our board to meet the public, and also members of the community and business community to just come in, chat for a few minutes, and leave if you wish. Doors will open at four-thirty and close at nine, so I hope everybody that can show up does. We're planning our Easter activities again this next year, that'll be held at the Newcastle Lodge. Uh, we have not gotten into planning for Fair Parade Fair yet, but we are in the middle of planning on the progress. Our biggest immediate expense is probably going to be the fireworks. We team with the fire department, they, they provide, they purchase and provide and show, but the Chamber of Commerce buys the product, and they have made a formal request for twelve thousand dollars. And at the moment, the funding is extremely limited at the chamber, and I'm not sure how we're going to do it, but I'm going to be out there rattling the trees and trying to get money to make sure we can have a good fireworks presentation. Yes, Gary.
Henry, are they still doing, like, a fill-the-boot, like they've done in the past?
We're working on it, I'm trying to get boots from James now. Uh, I found our boot at the chamber building, and I pulled it out, and need to take that with me for tomorrow's meeting. But I understand filling the boot gave some money, but very insufficient, where you're talking twelve thousand, I mean, it was ten thousand last year, but with the, uh, current increases and inflation, apparently it's gone up to twelve. Other things we're hoping to work with the community on RPM days, street fairs, and sturgis activities. There seems to be somewhere in town, but they're in different places that need to try to coordinate or work on getting that a little better coordinated, I hope. And of course, the annual Christmas lending program. For the chamber itself, our biggest expense is going to be our employee. When you look at the cost, it's, oh, it's equal to half, maybe a little more, when you load the costs of the employee to our budget. And we're at the moment looking at a, if I cannot get the membership to come up, but if you get everything else the same, we're looking at about a sixteen thousand dollar hit to our budget, because of the current, um, membership reduction. So, we're looking at staffing volunteers, Senior Centerway has a couple folks that are willing to come ahead and help keep the building open. So, we're getting that moving. Uh, our volunteer coordinator has been in touch with the school, I don't know what the answer was the school gave, but those are the students that need the previous service hours, and try to get them involved. Other massive costs that we will have are utilities, I was amazed how much the water bill is for the city, then our phone and our power. Only need some maintenance, so we're going to add a cost there, but one of our next larger costs is going to be information technology upgrades. We were talking earlier about your equipment here, our equipment also needs to be upgraded, it's very slow, the connections are, um, not that old per se, that is legacy when you look at IT equipment. We need to go into more of an electronic record keeping system, and a lot of our software needs updating, and much of the software we have, and I'll use QuickBooks as an example, they no longer support the software we have. But for us to upgrade it, they don't want us to buy software, they want us to subscribe, and my words for that are, that takes hundred dollars, hundreds of dollars of software and turns into thousands of dollars of software, but it's continuing monthly fees. Other things that are going up exponentially, posting, shipping, and advertising, we will, we have to look at our advertising budget. Uh, when I produce the budget, you will get a copy of it, and I want, you'll see in there, our advertising budget in the past has been low, but we need to increase that. We need to get it out more than just right here, because we need to really push the shop local. Uh, it would be nice to have people stop in our area before they go on their major shopping trips to Rapid or Joya, and try to get what they can here before they go there. That's been my goal. As a small business person myself, I know what it's like, and so I do my best to stop here first. So, at the moment, I'm playing some catch-up. Uh, we just got access to the phone system last week, finally. Uh, so the phone system is now working, I am sorting through over two hundred voicemails, and it's just taking a little bit of time, I grab several at a day as I go in. The Department of State documentation has been brought up to date, the unemployment workers comp fees and all have taken care of that, we're up to date with the state on that. And multiple emails, I'm now to the point, I can see read emails on the screen, not unread emails. And I would like to sit down, hopefully, with a member of the city, a member of the county, again, in the chamber, and also the community, to come up with evaluations of what is valid for the Newcastle chambers. What do they want and what do you want out of your chamber accounts? Because it's not what I want, if, if, my ideas are different than yours, nothing will sell, so it needs to be what you want. Overall, it's a slow process, I'm rebuilding, and our board is rebuilding, and all of us are working diligently together to move the chamber forward. So, if there's not many questions.
I very much appreciate the update, letting us know where you're at and how you're standing now.
There is one more item I wanted to bring up, and it was brought up by John Butts, uh, City Councilman. And he brought up in a January meeting that he wanted me, as the chamber, to reach out to Springfield Farming about potentially moving their operations to the Newcastle area. And his reasoning was that Illinois had just passed a solid. And his reasoning was that Illinois had just passed a solace grant. And that difference made it now without unconstitutional by their local courts from the field as always. And most people know that Illinois is a very unfriendly state for firearms. So what I asked the city council last night is that the chamber should not do this alone because this involves all of us. So I asked the city to think about it and I'll come back to them in a couple of weeks and see what they would like. I asked them, what incentives would they be willing to give to a company like Springfield Farming to move here? So I will ask the same with you all, with the county. What incentives would you all be willing to provide to bring an industry here even if you want the industry? If you don't want the industry, then there's no sense in any of us going out there. And it must be a partnership between the community, the business community, city and county to do this. It can't just be one person, for one organization or community. So if you all would think about that, I will get back to you on it. Also, the next time you see me, I will have a budget produced and you'll get a copy of the budget comparative last year to this year. And that way you'll know where you stood last year in your contributions because you're listed as one of our partners and also what we potentially need if you were able to do something. Otherwise, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Henry.
We have some homework to do too now. Brainstorm what we could do to maybe bring the industry to town.
Thank you, Henry.
That would be cool.
Okay, department heads are up. I can see Vicky just. She's just chomping at the bit to get up here.
Do you want to go first? Okay. I'm not the only one, so come on, you guys. Erin.
Throw it out to Vicky since she jumped up and ran to the front.
Sure, he did it over with. I'm Vicky Hayman with the Extension Office until last time I gave you a review of the past year. So I'll tell you what I've been doing this year so far. So I'm just going to talk about January and February. I have taught four in-person educational programs. I was featured on Backyards and Barnyards Live. Do you guys get that magazine? Have you seen the subscription to it? Some of you might be aware. So I talked about freezing and dehydration. So that was a lot of fun, something different. I continue to be supported with the radio and the newspapers and getting columns and radio spots out there to inform people on all kinds of things. I'm wrapping up my Preserva Home Food Safety, well, it's Food Preservation course with the University of Idaho. That's a six-week online course and that's been a lot of fun and we had a really good full class. In fact, they had to turn people away. So it's still a hot topic. I can still not get away from food preservation, so I'm just going to keep telling you that. Questions even yesterday that people call from all over. So I still put a lot of effort into that. I'm still working with the University of Wyoming Extension Nutrition and Food Safety website, so I continue to upload newsletters, anything relevant. So if you have any relevant topics, you know, shoot ideas to me because sometimes I'm looking for an idea of, you know, what's a concern, what's an issue that you might be facing. I've still got the Specialty Crop Grant going, so I'll be recruiting volunteers around the state soon to work on testing recipes for tomatoes and peppers and Tomateos, or Tomatillos, I should say. And then as the Heritage Park, one of the committees, and maybe you've heard from some of the others, but I did hear that the ARPA funds to build the park that were applied for a grant, the application was deemed ineligible and I haven't heard more. And I don't know if anyone else has heard more, but Dave Ehlers is the one that put that out. So unfortunately, you know, that didn't go through, but we hope to hear more from, you know, maybe why it was ineligible. So that's what I've been busy doing. Any questions?
Yeah, quick, I forget her name, Vicky, but I visited with a gal and thinking, you Dove, a couple of weeks ago about a, and she was interested in coming up here and doing an animal nutrition for livestock producers.
Have you heard anything yet? Oh, and don't let me forget, I think President Seidel will be here March 14th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the lodge. Yeah. And so if you can make time to meet him, I would encourage you to do that. No, I haven't heard anything.
To follow that up, it was me that bothered her.
Okay.
Because I haven't seen anybody up here for, I don't know. So.
Did you have a name?
Yeah, I was just trying to look it up.
Okay.
I don't see it right now.
There's so many people.
So how would I start that process with her? Just get her in touch with you guys to, I mean, she comes up and does personal visits to landowners, but she said it'd be great if I could do a course up there and get a lot of landowners at the same time for something like that. Would that be something to reach out?
Yeah, we can certainly help get her, you know, get her space or stuff. And then Micah Most is the ag educator out of Johnson County, but he has an area appointment, so he would be in our northeast area too. And I think he's looking for things to do over here. He just needs maybe some.
Ideas.
Yeah, what everybody's looking for and yeah, we would be more than happy to help facilitate the ag side of things.
On a lighter note?
Yes.
You can go into the survival on your freezing and dehydration class.
Survival, meaning?
Freezing and dehydration, that's what happens in Wyoming.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything for Vicky? Thanks, Vicky.
Thank you.
Erin, you're up.
All right, I have, I did some just kind of Weston County 4H highlights. So Erin Fershey, I'm the 4H educator. Currently, we have 154 youth members, 21 volunteers and seven volunteers that are still in the screening, training process. So we're working through that. On Friday, we held a fabric and fashion workshop, so some of the kids made pajama pants start to finish with one of our newer 4H volunteers. So that was a lot of fun. We have photography, dog robotics, food fun in 4H and shooting sports, as well as poultry workshops coming up. And then even this week, we have photography, dog robotics, shooting sports and poultry. So it's a busy 4H week. If you're not following along, jump onto the Weston County 4H Facebook page and just kind of follow along with all the fun stuff that we're doing. Currently, we have six 4H clubs that meet pretty much monthly throughout the year and we have two cloverbud clubs. So the cloverbuds are ages five to seven. We've just got the one in Upton. We just had the second meeting over there with that group last Thursday. So a lot of fun there. So some upcoming events that are happening, Virtual Career Night is open to youth across Wyoming and we've actually shared it out across multi-states. So we have a panel of speakers that are going to talk about different careers that they're involved in. We have one of the guys from the Meat Eaters Show on Netflix and just a really wide variety of speakers that night. So it should be a lot of fun. We're planning a regional leader summit in Gillette for April 22nd for any of the 4H volunteers or potential volunteers to join us for a fun day of learning and networking. We've been doing volunteer sharing sessions, so once a month via Zoom, the extension, different 4H educators and then 4H volunteers can all join from Zoom just remotely and talk about different topics that are relevant to 4H. And they've been a lot of fun and a lot of really good conversation. We had five of our volunteers join me at the Extension Office for the last one and it was a lot of really good conversations. We're starting planning for 4H Camp, which will happen June 16th, 17th and 18th, so Father's Day weekend at Mallow. So camp planning is coming up quickly. So if anyone would like to partake in 4H Camp, we're always looking for volunteers or chaperones. So any of you men that would like to come to 4H Camp, we would love to have you. And then National Volunteer Week is coming up in April. So just kind of a little look ahead to what all is going on. So lots of activities. And then just some fun pictures on the back of our kiddos busy doing what they do. So any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Keep up the good work.
Thanks. Feel free to join us for anything that we've got going on. We'd love to have you.
Thank you. Continue to grow the program.
What's your?
You're next in line, Suzie.
Okay, Suzie Oldman-Treasure. We've just been doing normal day-to-day stuff. I did send out reminders for the second half or the first and second half of the property taxes. So if the mortgage companies do pay your property taxes, disregard the notice. I sent those out to everyone. Kara just informed me this morning that the Wyoming Property Tax Refund forms are now available to be serving to apply for that for the state. And that's about it. Oh, I've got to, we've got to get the report for the tribal, both ARCA tribal, whatever it is, get it to me by April 14th.
Anyone have anything for Suzie? Thank you, Suzie.
Thanks, Suzie.
You jumped in a hot seat.
Yeah. Dana, what are your thoughts with courts? The last time we spoke, we were getting quotes for a new phone system. I did receive one from Collins Communication. It is a little more affordable, I think, than ranges. I didn't make copies because it's a lot of paper, so if you want to.
Is this an highlight thing?
Yeah, there's one, a service plan that includes parts and labor and then one that's just labor. And then there's the.
Would you want to scan them and email them to us? That way we can all go through.
Then I had emailed back on October 3rd to the board on the advice of then-chairwoman Earpman because I wasn't able to come to the board meeting. We had to purchase new scanners to be compatible with our new court program. That had to come out of my budget, totally depleted, basically depleted my supplies. I had asked if there was any possible way it could have come out of a courthouse budget for electronics, but I did not get any reply. So I'm asking if that could possibly be ratified because I do need supplies. Then.
How long does it take to follow you on that?
I'm good in my budget. Clark Hadlock has graciously offered to help with that as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. If I'm over in my budget, then I will probably, I will need an amendment.
Just, okay. Keep us advised when that is. If you work together, if we have to do a budget amendment for your office, you know, that's something unfortunate, the cost of doing business we have.
Right. And things are just increasing. We did send out, we upped our jury panel to 320 names in Weston County. Of those names, we have 150 qualified to serve on a jury for a year. So that's going to require more paper and envelopes because we're going to have to get more people. We do have jury trials set for the fiscal year '23, '24, but it would come out of this budget and that will be another adjustment that will come through. And we are working on it. As usual.
They will, they scan to us and we will try to have a decision by sometime April.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know, I can't remember what the quote date is with that.
Acceptance date?
Yes, thank you. Is, I can get with her if I'll ask. And they, she did say, honey, said that they won't do another one if this one.
Oh, okay, they'll work with this?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Anything else there? Tina? Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Have a great day.
Send a new job description. Who's next?
I was waiting for Steve, who was going to talk about some.
Kara, you want to jump in?
Sure.
Move forward.
Kara Livingston, West County Sister. Just kind of going on with the day-to-day in our office, we're finalizing evaluations and notice evaluations as May lines up throughout the beginning of April. Like I mentioned previously, our field crew is preparing their route for this spring/summer. They're going to start out in town Upton. They have about half of in-town Upton to do and then we're going to move back to the side of the county. And that's pretty much it for the month. Like Suzie mentioned, the Wyoming Property Tax Refund that's funded by the state, they passed a bill to amend the qualifications for it, so it's actually available to more people now and they approved more money for you to qualify for a refund on paying last year's taxes. So I did bring their brochure. I recommend everyone going to their website, if you go to the Department of Revenue website, there's its own link, it says Property Tax Refund. And you can apply online or you can print the application out, you can print the brochure out, all of it's right there and it's pretty easy to follow. So I did bring one for everybody to just look at.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
And I have one office if you would like.
Thank you, Henry.
And as for office, I have not visited the office site, but I can, depending on when.
Anyone have any for Kara? Nope. Public Health. You're up.
Maybe more for you. So Public Health will be conducting an exercise to address the available shelters in Weston County with an emphasis on our access and functional needs population. Okay, so including your children, people with disabilities, older adults, low-income homeless, that type, those types of groups of people. And the exercise will be Tuesday, April 11th from 8:30 to 11:30 at the Newcastle Fire Hall. And we highly encourage our elected officials to attend this exercise just so that all around we have a knowledge about, you know, our shelter needs are for populations here. Our regional Red Cross representatives from Denver will also be there and again, the state too. So it'll, you know, they'll be coming in by Zoom and things. Also, would like to have permission to be able to close the building that day from 8 to 12 to be able to do that exercise, which is, it has been okayed by the state. So I just need your permission.
Want to do that in motion?
Are you going to advertise this on our, I don't know.
Yeah. So yeah, we'll put it in the paper and then on our Facebook page.
I would prefer motion, that way it's officially recorded.
Great.
What day and time?
It's April 11th from 8 to noon. The exercise is like 8:30 to 11:30, but to allow us a little bit of time to get back there and.
Make a motion to allow Public Health to close the doors on April 11th, today being the meeting.
Second. We have a motion, probably second, to allow Public Health to close their office on April 11th from 8 till noon so they can attend the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program.
Yes.
I was reading the record, so it has a reason why.
Yeah.
It's in the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in opposed, say nay. Motion carried. You have permission.
Thank you. Other than that, we've been working with a lot of the other entities in town, really pushing working education and just what we can do for them. So tomorrow morning, I'll go to the elementary. So tomorrow morning, I'll go to the elementary school, and I'll do a nutrition class. We also have our smoking cessation that we're still doing, which has been really popular. We go ahead and advertise that. If you guys, you know, word of mouth too, please let people know. The other thing would be, these health, we're doing like a self-care class, which having people come in and just kind of learn those little bits about taking care of themselves. So that's been pretty popular as well. The diabetes education. So we have a lot going on. It's been busy. Shell's been really busy with her program, her moms and her babies, and she always is. So she does a great job with that. The Narcan program continues. We still get calls about that. So we go up and make meetings with people to get them all set up with doing that. And of course, advertising through our Facebook. We have potentially added, we add people every month, but we're reaching over 2,000 people every time we have a post, which I think is way huge increase. So because people are sharing and it's getting out there. So I think people are recognizing it, and it's bringing more people in. So we just continue to work with that.
Anybody, questions? Thank you, Suzy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mike Stalk, Weston County Attorney. Right now, our office has 10 active felony cases. We started in December. I was going to be more ambitious, but we were, I was going to try and do monthly training for law enforcement. I thought it seemed too ambitious. So I'm going to try to do quarterly, just to keep them sort of fresh on different ideas to make sure we're doing stuff right. Brooke is getting me out of the 90s. I'm getting me electronically more current. We're going all, we're getting all of our old electronic files, or our old paper files electronic, and doing other stuff with technology. We have a new sort of system that we're using to pick juries. I'm used to just writing the names on a piece of paper and figuring it out. But this thing looks pretty, pretty sharp as far as streamlining the process. Other than that, really nothing else.
On your training you want to do, including the police department too?
Yes. Yep, everybody. And highway patrol and.
Okay. Highway law enforcement?
Yep.
Where are we at? Did you ever reach out to Mike Harris in that situation? And where are we at with that?
I have. I reached, I had a telephone conference with Mr. Daly in January. He was going to talk to somebody. And then I sent him another message, middle of February, to see where, you know, what we can do to keep going forward. But I haven't heard back from him yet. So I'll reach out to him again. I just don't know why he hasn't got back to me as far as.
You're talking about Mike?
His attorney.
Oh, I see.
His attorney, yeah, Mr. Daly, Todd Daly.
Anything else for Mike? Thanks, Michael.
Do you have just a few things that I've done? Sorry, I don't have more of these. But if you look at them off the screen, just so you get an idea. I did talk to a professional tree pruner. I've been wanting to do this for years around here, you know, between the library and here. They come up, he gave me that, which I think is really a fair, fair bid on what amount of work he's going to do. I mean, I just assume do this is lose some of the stuff we have here, or somebody get their eye poked out. Kind of tree wrong and it dies. I mean, I'm, so you guys, look at that. I went ahead, we talked earlier or last month about the door opener for Upton Library. I went ahead and got that scheduled. I was taking care of. I was hoping to, I was going to get two bids for the concrete. I got one in. I thought the other one was going to be here by today, which it wasn't. So that'll have to be next week. One thing about this pruner deal, this guy takes care twice a year. He hauls, he does everything. We have a storm, he makes it right. But, Steve.
While you're on that, would you update him about the big tree out for the library? Well, no, I mean, tell him we're going to lose that tree.
Yeah, and I think it's robed. I mean, it's been pruned and wrong so many years that it's got, where water can get in the trunk. He says, by him looking at it, he said, we'll be lucky the way it is now for maybe five years. But hopefully with the correct pruning and the tape painting and making it, you know. And there's also a liability deal about some of these branches that are way up there of, you know, dropping. Because we lose quite a few every time it storms over there. But I feel better about it being cleaned up and hopefully being able to keep it for another extra five years. So that's why, you know, and before, we really didn't have anybody here in town, professional that insured, you know, and that I knew of. I mean, there may be, I visited with the gentleman from the city that's their tree man, and he said the closest is Sheridan or Casper. Give me their cards. But I've talked to some people that has residential, private individual that's had him come do work, and they were really impressed with him. So that's, I mean, it may seem pretty high, but that's not, that's not a cheap business, you know? They have a lot of liability and stuff. So, I mean, I hope nobody has an issue with that.
Appreciate you looking into that for us.
And like I say, we talked about concrete. Hopefully he'll, in next meeting, I'll have two bids for you guys to look at. I mean, each one had different thoughts on how they would do it. But, I mean, they're both knowledgeable people. And, and so we'll see what, when we get that one. I visited with, I remember that one of their engineers called me last Friday. We visited Friday afternoon for 45 minutes about the heat upstairs and the bulbs. And he thinks that he has a pretty good solution to that, that he would, he told me it'd be a week or two before he got back to me. So that's still in the ballgame, and we're, hopefully we can eliminate the issues that we have. And something to think about, I don't know if this is the correct time. But after visiting with him, you know, they've come and looked at the system that we have in the library. And we visited a while on that. I really feel that that's something come budget time. We really need to, you really need to think hard about, because he also told me, and I totally believe in that, some of these bigger units and stuff are right now are 32 weeks out. He's had customers last year that, well, we're going to hold on, hold on. Then come this winter, they lost their, you know. Then here they sit, no. So that's going to be something. So let me see if there's something else. All right. I guess.
He discussed with you at all about these cherry trees?
That's all the trees.
That's all.
The only tree it's not is that one right there. And that's more or less a private tree. And they, when we have issues with it, an individual comes and takes care of it. I mean, we, a couple of years, years ago, it started dying. He come up here and started pruning. And I would just assume the responsibility be on them if it would. I mean, we lost one in the library doing it that way. The guy come and just started lacking on one that they planted for a memorial. And it, within a few months, it was dead. I would just assume, like I say, I'll leave that one alone. But it's, the rest of the trees I did miss, and I can talk to him, and it wouldn't be but a few more dollars. I would like to shape up the trees just a little bit down by the jail, so they're more off of a side block type deal. But that's not included. I just thought about that. So I don't think of anything. We'll see what happens with the concrete. Then we'll be set for, and they're both aware that it's got to be done, you know, as soon as possible. So we can, if that guy shows up. And then spend a little money to put a window in Gilbert's office down there that hasn't been a window for, there's been an air conditioner in there.
Steve, did you ever get a chance to figure out what the deal was with that light? It's on 24 hours a day. I know it's LED, but still, it eventually will burn out if it stays on. I didn't know if you had a chance.
I look at it, and I forget about it, and I look at it.
That's fine. The other one was, is he able to look at that application for maintenance? Or has he, in his opinion?
Oh.
Is that for you?
Yes.
I'd love to get his input on that, you know, what his opinion is. That's all.
Is it different matter? Is it possible, it's a personnel issue? Is it possible to meet with you guys after this is over, about 10 minutes? Or does that have to be scheduled? I mean, it's just me. I mean, it's something I'd like to visit real quick about.
Is it?
I mean, like I say, it doesn't concern anything with the county or, you know, anything bad. It's just something I need to get straightened out.
We could probably have a short deck session between the meeting versus, you know, personnel. That way we could, you could address what you need to.
Yeah, it won't take much time. And if you want, you know.
Yeah, we'll just hang around.
Anything else for me? I mean.
Check your list. Appreciate it. You've been working on it.
There's a lot of stuff, and I don't know. I mean, maybe we can, because I don't understand, I haven't never heard what you're really doing down there besides the elevator, you know, I don't, as far as, I thought they had a list of what they want, their priorities.
We haven't actually, nothing in cutting stone yet, just to get a little bit of, but it is our big project now. And we'll.
We did a walkthrough two weeks or a month ago. And looked at much of this stuff. We got a list, at least.
Take a round and figure it out.
I have, I'm working on the budget, but I have to do some stuff for Brian. He was going to be here, but he can't take it over. He has an MOU that needs to be signed for Weston County and Congress County. It's just the law enforcement agreement for Bronson, Agent Bronson, moving to each other's county. Just needs proof and sign.
I think it's probably the standard one we do there.
It is. It's every four years, and it just needs to be renewed, please.
Make a motion for the chairman's signature and MOU between Weston County Sheriff's Office and the Congress County Sheriff's Office. Their number associated with it.
It's just a MOU between the county of Weston, the county of Wyoming, and the county of Congress, Wyoming for law enforcement, ex territorial assistance.
For law enforcement, ex territorial assistance.
One second. We have a motion, probably second, to allow the chairman's signature for an MOU to Weston and Congress County for law enforcement assistance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Help for Brian.
He did say that he's working on getting announced for the meeting. But he doesn't have it yet.
The MOU has already been signed by the sheriff and fishers of Congress County for the last one.
Let me go ahead.
Oh. Yeah, I forgot that.
Well, yeah. We got behind. I'd like to go back to the HR consultants. I feel like in order for Jeannie and I to go forward and get their advice, I'd like to get permission to at least get on the list so I can talk to the new HR consultants. And if you're not comfortable with everybody being on there, I guess. But at this point, I just need to do that so we can go forward and ask their advice on a couple things.
Do we want to move forward with all commissioners' signatures? Or just?
That would be a form number two.
Two commissioners? Okay. Which two do we want? Vera and the chair?
I have a motion for Vera Huber and Chairman, Commissioner Vera Huber and Chairman Ed Legner to be added to the list of contacts for our human resources department. Who gives them that?
When I talked to them the other day, they just, I, they really didn't say. I'll ask them when I call. I didn't want to go any forward or any farther with it until I talked to them.
So if they need a letter from the board, you also add that to the motion. Here. The chairman's.
Second. We have a motion, probably second, to put Commissioner Huber and Chairman's name to be, have access to our HR company. And there's also, if there's a signature required, authorize chairman's signature on that paperwork. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Vera.
And then also, back on the TV and Zoom meetings, I guess I'd like to get permission to go forward. Well, what do you think? Can go forward with this? Or do we need to still wait on what yours was?
Well, that's kind of what I was bringing up, yeah. Nathan, what we're talking about.
Can we just add it to the old business for the next meeting?
Sure.
And then we can have a discussion.
Okay.
You okay with that, Vera?
Yeah, that's fine.
You have time to figure it out.
Now give us bids to the.
Right.
Bids to the commission.
Okay, so during, during my research of websites, I did watch some other county meetings and noticed that their public comments time was at the beginning of their meeting. And I've been thinking about this. It makes much more sense to have the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, because we put our, out our agenda ahead of time so the public can see what we're going to be talking about. If they have a comment about anything that we're going to be speaking about, we need to hear that at the beginning so we can take their comments into consideration before we make decisions. If we put a public comment at the end, we've already made those decisions, and truly, it's just a comment. So I was wondering what you thought about putting public comment at the beginning of our meeting. And maybe that will tighten things up a little bit, and it will, our public comment will actually be about things on our agenda.
I like that suggestion. Not a little problem. That way if we run behind, the people who have center wait early and people who are there.
Right, right.
They can get their business, their public comment taken care of and on their way.
And hopefully that will, will encourage more people if they have a, if they actually have a concern about something that we're talking about. It, hopefully that will, they'll be more apt to come in so they, because they don't have to wait all morning to talk.
May or if our meeting's more productive. I'm just, that's just to change the agenda lineup so we don't need to act on motions for that.
Kind of think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Any public comment before going to executive session? Any public comment?
Walter Sprague, and I'm not here at this point with the public comment with the newsletter journal. This is just me as a citizen. First of all, I like the idea of having the public comments there. However, I would also ask that you maybe make time for an additional public comments. I don't think it would ever take too much time. For instance, I have a public comment about the Fair Board. And I wouldn't have known what was going on until that resignation letter was. was going on until that resignation letter was, I know what's going on, but I wouldn't have had the comment until the resignation letter had been read. So, I can see where during the course of the meetings, a public comment would be coming out of the meeting as well as the stuff that is in front of me. I know that adds a little bit more on the agenda and possibly more on time, but I think it's important that they have the ability to listen to what's going on and even make a comment after the fact as well. Yes?
Would it be possible, rather than opening the commissioner meetings up as a discussatory meeting throughout the whole meeting, which would be pretty unproductive at that point, could we do an addition on the front side and leave our, our public comment at the end also?
I.
Is that what your thing is?
I'm thinking the, a public comment at the beginning so people can make their comments and leave, but things can come up in the meeting and there may be somebody who wants to make a public comment after the fact as well. So, I'm not sure how you would address all that. And I'll leave that to you. I do have a comment on the resignation, not, not really the resignation, but the Fair Board, and I think this goes to all the boards. And I gotta be really careful here because I know some things, I've had people come to me and I don't know why people keep coming to me because they don't do the reporting on these things. But they'll go, did you hear this, that this was going on and did you hear this? So, it's this person said this, this person said that. And there is information about activity and things that are being said that were inappropriate from one person to another or from a couple people to another. And I have a feeling that some of this is why you got that resignation from Jessica Graham. As you guys, did I hear you correctly that, that there is a law that is coming up or has been passed where you guys are actually kind of overseeing these boards, that you, they have to have some training or what was that?
I think the legislation, I think Becky knows about it too. It's the, I think every public board is mandated, it's gonna be mandated to do train. I haven't looked.
To have training?
Specifically the legislation, I think you have.
And I think that has to do though with any of them that receives federal funds or grants.
Okay.
My suggestion and comment really on this is there is appropriate behavior and talk and there is inappropriate behavior and talk. And I have heard things from several people, some that are accused of it and some that were recipients of it. And they don't feel like they can come out and be fairly represented or treated fairly. They feel there's a good old boys' attitude that excludes them from being able to take their own feelings into account. These are things that I think need to be addressed in the boards, in the vetting of people, and I just wanted to kind of put that out there and let you know. I really gotta be careful because I'm privy to information that I cannot talk about too much because of the people involved. And I don't know the facts, I know the hearsay. So, I don't want to put out the hearsay of it in terms of identifying people. But apparently there has been some inappropriate stuff said and there is things that are happening because of that, and I think that may have been part of why you got that resignation letter. Not that that, I'm not saying Jessica is who it came to as far as inappropriate behavior, but she's tired and dealing with it is how I kind of took that letter a little bit. So, anyway, as you, as you guys fill boards and things like this or do training on boards, I think that that is something that really needs to be addressed. Okay?
Is there any other public comment? Hearing none? We'll hold the executive session.
What is the executive session?
This is second.
Okay.
On this one? That's what, this was what was reflected. Maybe stop by or give me a call sometime and we'll figure out kind of what you're looking for and we'll find out.
Yeah, I'll visit with you.
Yes. Yes, we can figure it out. Thank you.
You bet. Make a motion to go into executive session 16, 4, 405, II. Consider employee, professional person or employee of Weston County.
Motion, probably second, going to executive session 16, dash, 4, dash, 405, dot, II, II. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.